Excellent. So we're gonna start. This is the City Council Select Committee to Study Barriers to Serving in City Boards and Commissions. Today is June 30, 2022. This meeting is gonna run over Zoom and it's gonna run from 7:00 to 8:30. We're gonna start calling the meeting to order. We're gonna do the roll call. Pamela?
Absolutely. Javier Luengo Grado.
Here.
Councillor Jamila Gore.
Yeah.
Susan McDonald Bolanos. Gwen Nabad.
Here.
Councillor Derek Perry.
I'm here.
Cynthia Suarez.
Here.
And Jana White.
Here.
Excellent. We have quorum. As I said, this meeting is gonna be recorded and it's over Zoom. We're gonna go to item number two of the agenda, which is public comment, which is, you know, we're starting select committee, sort of aspirational for now. So it's just giving the space and even for us to get used to. Start with public comment at the beginning of the meeting. We're gonna wait a little bit. To see if somebody from the audience. It's interested to do public comment. So at this point, we're in agenda item number two, public comment. We have allocated 15 minutes for public comment. If you wanna do public comment, feel free to use the raise hand feature. If you cannot find it on Sony's right where reaction is in the bottom of your Zoom page. If that gets a little too complicated, feel free to raise your hand and I will call on you. Joella Turpin, please go ahead. We're gonna do. Give me one second. I'm gonna time it. We didn't, we haven't decided before how much time, but we're gonna do. We're gonna, we're gonna keep the beautiful old three minutes.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Joella Tarban. I love the way you said it. They call me Jada. And I heard about this meeting when I went to the city clerk's office. Pam said, and who's Javier? Okay, yes. So I'm very interested and I know about four other people who are interested. Unfortunately, I have a conflict tonight. So I had to go to another meeting, but I heard about it and I wanted to introduce myself. And I know two people, three people at least who are here. And to say that I'm interested in how do people go about it and the schedule. I see the agenda tonight, but what do you need? And your synopsis and all that good stuff. And it's okay to be a part of this in some way.
Excellent. So just, just to clarify, when we're doing public comment, the public comment, it's not meant for conversation between public and the members of the committee. That's sort of standard within city council, including boards and commissions. I, would I be able to get your email from, from Pamela? Excellent.
Writing it down. I'm writing it down for everybody.
Excellent. So I, I, I can shoot you an email. So, so far, we are going we're still going week by week deciding when we're meeting. Hopefully, we're gonna get into, into sort of a bi-weekly, but we're still sort of trying to figure out that because, you know, people's lives are complicated and time is complicated. So, but I really appreciate that you're here. I'm gonna, oh, this is excellent. Okay, I'm gonna save this. And thank you so much for being here, for being part of public comment. I appreciate that you are taking the time to, to do it. Thank you so much. So we're gonna wait a little bit, just in case if somebody is around here, we have until, at least, if somebody shows up, probably we have until 7:18, a little more or less. If not, we can move to the next agenda item. Excellent. So we're gonna move to the next agenda item. And maybe some of you may be surprised that we have introduction of committee members. And I noticed when we were building the agenda, that one of the things that we didn't talk about in introductions was what was the process that each of us, when the first time that we serve in a committee, commission, board, right? And I think that's really important for us sort of to talk a little bit about our own experience. Because I think that, you know, that's sort of our firsthand experience with, with specifically sort of reaching out to city council or whoever reached out to us, asking us to be part of something, or maybe we were the ones sort of taking the first step. And I think that would be sort of interesting because also people would learn for the people who have served before in commissions, committees, et cetera, where we are and what so far has been our experience with that process. So I just wanna open the floor to talk for 10, 15 minutes in relation to our own experience as part of the introduction of the select committee of how we came about to be part of committees or boards. When?
Hello. Well, I'm new to this. So this is a new experience for me and sometimes I feel like I have a lot of questions and I know that attorney Sewell came in the beginning to explain some of the open meeting law and stuff like that. And I feel good that I, if I had questions, I could call him. But um, and I've had some experience because I served on student senate. So we had to learn Robert's rules. And you know, I, I've served as vice president of my, in high school of my high school class. And then I, I also served as vice president and creator of Mothers Against Drunk Driving at my high school. But you know, I'm a lot older than high school now. So that's, I, I think that, I hope that answers some of the question.
Absolutely, absolutely. Cynthia?
So my, my experience with the city has been for committees. And this is one of them. But the Board of Health, I think I've been on about eight or nine years. And it was an application that I filled out and had an interview with the mayor. To, the Police Commission was something set up by the mayor and city council. And I guess city councillors had they could choose like five members and the mayor could choose five. So I put in application for that and got a phone call from the mayor. This committee and another committee pesticide were what's called select committees of city council. So I don't know if that, if that process is a little bit different. But to be frank, I was tapped on the shoulder, right, by city councillors. So that's how that process occurred. And there was no application. And so, yeah, so that's it.
Excellent. How long have you been serving in the Board of Health, Cynthia?
I know I should know the answer to this. Pam will just probably look it right up, but I think it's about eight or nine years. I think about eight years. Yeah, thank you. And that's a, that's a reoccurring thing, whereas the city council one offs are just like, they stop, they start, right? So.
When?
I should get everything organized so I can put everything together in one statement. I also go to a lot of city council meetings and during the COVID, I found it a really great way to get reliable news. And to know what was going on in the city and, you know, how the city works and stuff like that. And I kind of took some of that and sort of like, it helped me serving in student senate. In terms of like, also, I, I also have done a lot of meetings with Climate Action Now. And I did, you know, I would write letters for climate stuff and you know, go to legislative hearings and things like that, which I've done quite a bit. So I've done some activism type work. And I am trying to organize people in my community. So hopefully we can get to that. So that's a little more of my background.
Thank you. And as many times as you want to intervene, so don't worry about it. Jana?
Um, so after the elections in 2016, I got motivated to get involved. I think a lot of people got motivated around that same time. So the sort of precursor to me actually joining a board was participating in the Women's Fund Leadership Institute for Political and Public Impact, which was really inspirational and transformational for me because a lot of people participating in that program were serving in various capacities in their communities. And in ways that I found kind of surprising. So for example, somebody who was on the school committee, who was not a parent, who was a renter in her community and who was fairly young and it just didn't fit my sort of typical vision of what a school committee member would look like. So I think one of the things that was really important for me was just being around other people who were taking advantage of these opportunities and who didn't necessarily fit my not very well-formed vision of what the traditional board member looked like. Um, I found out about the vacancy on the planning board because I was Facebook friends with somebody who was on the board who happened to post, repost something that I think had been on the mayor's page, Facebook page, saying that there was an opening. So it was just sort of this random happenstance that I saw the opening. And I asked to meet with her and asked her some of my questions before submitting an application. And then I went through the, the formal process. So had a, you know, submitted an application, had a phone call with the city councillor and with the mayor, attended a meeting and then was appointed. And that was all in 2018. And I've been serving on the planning board since then. My secondary appointment on the Community Preservation Committee is as the planning board rep. So that just occurred. You know, when there was an opening, the previous rep had vacated his position on the board. This committee I find out about because Carolyn Mish, who's the staff liaison for the planning board, sent out an email announcing the creation of this committee that looked to me like it was going out to all of the chairs and board members of existing committees. And I decided to apply because of my interests that I discussed last time. So that's how I ended up here.
So. I'm trying to see by the millisecond who raised their hand first.
Jamila can go first.
Okay.
I got to this committee by, um, uh, Councillor Nash kind of tapped me for this committee. I had in 2008 previously applied to the Human Rights Commission. So that was the first kind of introduction I had to commissions and committees in the city. This woman who was on the Human Rights Commission encouraged me to apply. So I applied. I didn't get selected for that. And then I got elected for city council. So that was an elected position. And so that's kind of all the experience I have with commissions and committees in North Hampton.
Derek?
Yeah. And I'm pretty much in the same boat as Jamila. You know, I have not served on committees prior to this. So through my time as the councillor, I, you know, I've kind of jumped into this realm. And when it was announced that this committee was being formed, I expressed some interest because you know, being a person of color and knowing how important representation is, this really hit home to me. So I knew that I wanted to be a part of this process. Because a lot of what my city councilship has been, has been a learning experience. And I wanted to see what other opportunities there were for the, for people in the city. And, you know, by me knowing what is available, that means I can do more outreach to other people who I think would be good fits for other committees. So I thought it just made sense.
Perfect. You know, sometimes you learn by doing. And, you know, and, and even for different experience, that's, that's also sort of the norm, right? I appreciate that everyone here can serve and can be here because I do, and we were talking with Jamila the other week, how this group looks like, that's pretty amazing group with a lot of experience, with a lot of diverse experience. And that is good that, you know, we're seven and that allows a lot of conversation and a lot of sort of debate to happen. So I appreciate that this is not a sort of a bigger group. And I think that was, came out of sort of the thoughtfulness of City Council President Nash and Vice President Foster. And I appreciate that because in that way, we can actually sort of do this work even better. Excellent. We're gonna move to the next agenda item.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Are you gonna tell your story?
Oh. Thanks, Jana. So, so because of the kind of work that I do, I'm, I, you know, I write legislation for elected officials statewide and, and locally, I work with different municipalities. I work with city council elected officials writing ordinances in the local level. And I, you know, I sort of help them to move important and relevant legislation, examples of sort of the welcoming city ordinance in Springfield, Southampton, Greenfield, Northampton. The ban on the use of facial surveillance that it's now being reviewed by the city of Northampton, which also passed it in Springfield. We had a pass in Boston, Cambridge, Somerville, East Hampton. So my experience mostly comes from already working within sort of the municipal structure and the state political structure. But most of my work happens sort of behind, like, behind elected official. It's not sort of about being in front. And the first time that, you know, I was asked to come a little forward was for the Northampton Police Review Commission, right? That commission lasted eight to nine months. In the last couple of months, we were meeting around 12 hours each week. Because we didn't know better at the beginning. So, you know, that happens. And I was lucky there because Cynthia was the co-chair of the Northampton Police Review Commission. So we had a really diverse, Dr. Booker Bush. We have Elizabeth Roman, Marahas Roman. So we have a pretty sort of diverse group and a really good group. And so that helped a lot because also we have a sort of a really thoughtful process. We have several people coming and giving testimony. And because in a, in a sort of strange but beautiful way, we, we were over Zoom, we were able to have people from, you know, Kahoots, from Eugene, Oregon, testifying about alternative policing. We have Rachel Bromberg from Toronto, who is now implementing an alternative to crisis response, alternative to police. So we have, we have the police chief several times. We have subcommittees. So I was the co-chair of the Alternatives to Policing Subcommittee and I was a chair of the Outreach Committee. So was a, as a structure and as a serving the first time in a full-fledged commission that was gonna last, is it gonna be really intense? And it was gonna be eight months was pretty good. Nothing that I didn't know for, perceive for the experience that I had before, but you know, it's different being in front, sort of giving the face. But also every time that I'm saying, you know, we have a lot of privilege. You know, I'm conscious that in the Northampton Police Review Commission, me giving opinions about the police and how the police is doing. Or when people are telling me that we're having any trouble and all of this, and I'm seeing all the testimonies of the unhoused people that are being harassed. It's in that creating, you know, creating conversation and being able to talk about it. I, I love that. I love, I think that has a lot of value. And I think that Northampton has a level of civility. But at the same time, frankness that appreciate. So, and I'm happy here with you guys. I think this is an awesome group and I think we're gonna do great. Thanks. Now we're gonna move to the next agenda item. So we are gonna be, everybody here was able to take a look to the minutes from June 9, 2022 and June 23, 2022. Everybody was able to take a look to the minutes. Excellent. So is there anybody who wants to amend any? Okay, Cynthia?
I think the June 23 minutes, correct me if I'm wrong, made a reference to our next meeting as July 30. And I think it should be June 30.
Yes. Full disclosure, when send me an email pointing out that. And, and full disclosure, I bet that was, that was planted there. So see who. Just saying. Excellent. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the minutes from June 9 and June 23, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Excellent. Garrett makes a motion to approve. I'm looking for a second.
I second.
Excellent. Jenna's second. Pamela?
So I'm just gonna note that as a Scrivener's error on the, when I do the minutes and, and we'll be sure to make that correction.
Yes.
One second here. Sorry, lost my place. Okay, Councillor Jamila Gore.
Yes.
Gwen Nabad.
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
Cynthia Suarez.
Yes.
Jana White.
Yes.
Javier Luengo Grado.
Yes. Excellent. So we approve the meetings from June 9 and June 23, 2022. So we're gonna move to agenda item number five. But what I'm, what I'm gonna do before, and because I wanna be also thoughtful and taking advantage of that we have public, I'm gonna, I'm gonna copy paste, if I can find it before I sit it. I'm gonna copy paste the on the chat, I'm gonna paste the agenda for today. So anybody who wants to refer to the agenda can do it. So it's, I just put, I put it on the chat. So feel free to follow with us. We're now moving to agenda item number five. First, I know we were talking a little bit in the last meeting in relation to what we wanna see happen, right? But I would get a little more concrete. A little more concrete means that if we're, if we're gonna be thinking about producing a report, right? How that, how would be the structure of the report? What I, what we want to see in the report and what are the hopes of what kind of information we can add to the report, right? One of the things that was mentioned in a couple, two minutes ago, the first meeting, the organizational meeting was that maybe we wanna take a look to the entire process, what happened when somebody not necessarily the process written on paper, but certainly the process of some people that have gone through, through, through the process of, of hearing an opening to all the way of being either approved to serving a board. And what that meant with the amount of time and commitment and, you know, that, that's involved, or somebody who, you know, applied for, for, for a commission, select committee aboard and, you know, was not, didn't get the position, right? So I would like to open the floor to talk about a little bit about the expectations and the goals that we would like to see as a select committee in relationship to, to the chart that we were given, which was to study and give an opinion in an informed manner in relationship to the barriers and difficulties that people may face when trying to serve in commissions. I'm opening the floor. Cynthia?
Um, so I hope I'm responding to your call Javier correctly. And this might seem a little insignificant, but people that I have talked to become disillusioned because there is no acknowledgement. Once the application goes in and we, you know, it'd be nice if there was something that says, we have it, here are the next steps. And then when that search is closed, this is all about being kind and respectful to our city, to our, to our residents. And when that search is closed, let that individual know, tell them that they keep the applications for a year, I think. If another position becomes available, you're still eligible, et cetera. So just, just one of those basic one-on-one administrative things that would keep people interested in applying one time and, and the second time if they didn't make it the first time around. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes. So yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, would you say that one of the things that we need to look is sort of the contrasting, right? Because I think Pam sent us a really thorough document about the process, so frequently asked questions, which is speaks to this, right? And also a thorough spreadsheet that certainly is putting us ahead. And I just wanna say thanks to Pam for it. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, one thing, a piece of paper can withstand a lot of writing. And I, and I would love, as you said, Cynthia, to look sort of real, real experience of real people with the process. And we, if we can sort of point out into that timeline, any discrepancy or something that we think that could be improved, I think would be a really, a really good goal for us to achieve. When?
I'm just, can I just respond one more? I'm sorry, Gwen. I did ask an individual who was very frustrated with the process. I'm sorry if I sort of went, leaped ahead and said, hey, would you be interested in coming and talking to us and tell us how that, how that worked? And then individual said, no, 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 I can't do that because that'll ruin my chances for another time. And so I just think that's a real feeling, right, that people have. And the other thing, and I hope we get it in later, I loved Pam's spreadsheet. There were some things in the frequently asked questions that contradict what the website says. And so we'll have to, you know, I can point out that discrepancy later on. So.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Cynthia. When?
I was gonna second what, what Cynthia brought up. And, you know, it's, it's like when you apply for something, you have to give a lot of information. And so then it goes into like, what seems like a black hole. There is confirmation that you submitted it. But then nothing ever happens. And I think Jamila mentions that too. I don't know if it was that you didn't get a response, but it really, really helped the work that Pam did, writing up all of the different committees and just everything. It was so informative and I feel like everybody should know about it, you know? So that's, that's kind of the thing. Yeah. So those are just my thoughts.
Excellent. Gary?
Kind of touched on this before, but I think one of my goals and expectations is to also push back the, you know, the curtain of mystique of, of city service. Maybe finding ways to, and I guess the umbrella term would be outreach. Because also I mentioned that I really wanna look at ways to get younger candidates and, and you know, it, it tends to be the people who serve on committees or do city service. The people who serve on committees or do city service are folks who are later on life, who are a little more established, who have the time. Uh, cause you know, we've already discussed that it is a privilege to serve on committees and have the, the time and space. So I think that. One of my goals is to improve outreach just from the city. Um, and, and I think outreach also what was previously said from Cynthia. Disseminating information, communication back and forth is, you know, outreach doesn't just stop at recruiting. It should continue. So there should be some steps there. Um, and I, on a side note, I was. Tossing around some ideas of, of how to inform people more and I was thinking of, of some. Coming up with out of the box ideas, like maybe a, a committee fair, you know, like there's, there's job fairs. So maybe coming up with a way that. Especially in now in this time where we have Zooms, where you could. Zoom in with heads of many of the committees or chairs and then break up into smaller. You know, breakup groups and you can have, instead of having to read things, you could just ask some questions or kind of get a sense of who else is on the board. So. Um, that, that would be one of my goals is thinking, you know, just thinking of ways to engage our population in city, um, to get them to come and. Engage, so.
That's, that's interesting, right? I, so I, I, I'm part of the Latino Advisory Board for NEPR. In Western Mass and we just have a sort of a cafecito in Chicopee. Uh, to meet the new CEO, the new director and you know, staff. And I think that kind of social activities would be good. Uh, I would advise, uh, so. The problem with break, breakup groups that wouldn't allow to record because the recording would, is, is remain in the main room. So we would be violating the open meeting law. So, but, but certainly, I mean. We were talking a little bit about this, right? What about if us, we, we set up a time to meet on a Saturday and we do it downtown, right? And we set up something for, you know, depending on the level of how comfortable we are doing that, right? And people can come and grab a coffee with us and we can be, you know, from ten to twelve in a place. And I, outside preferably. So I think that's, that's absolutely, that's a great idea.
And, and I just wanna say that I was thinking less even about our committee doing this. Uh, kind of fair thing, but just, you know, the idea of, you know, in January, second week of January, there's gonna be a. Committee fair. It's all the heads can. Do their recruitment or you know, a chance to meet, like a meet and greet of some sort.
Yeah.
Um, just establishing something like that. Um, you know, I, I think it's very important, especially after. You know, COVID going through the separation of everyone being apart is just, you know, we're, we're all relearning how to socially interact with some person, some, each other and. You know, I, I know that even on our city council, uh, we had our first hybrid meeting the other day. Thanks Pam, you're an all-star. Um, but it, it felt good to be in the room and to actually be interacting with the council. So, you know. Anything we could do to, to bring people together to help the city, I think is gonna help us all.
Absolutely. I think the idea of a sort of a city fair to show sort of, you know, the, the, the committees and all, it's a great idea. It's an opposite idea. As long as we have, you know, n- none of those committees have forum.
Yeah.
As long as we don't do that, we're fine. Excellent. So Lori, I, so we, Lori, we already went through the public speaking time, but I wanna recognize your message. I'm gonna make sure to send you an email with, with our next meeting.
Great, thank you. And, and my apologies both for showing up late and having to leave early. I wanted to at least be able to drop in and learn more about what you're doing. So, thank you.
Thanks for being.
Okay, bye-bye.
Excellent. Um, anybody else? Jamila.
I think that the idea of a citywide like committee and commission fair is really good. I think that would be great. If it happened, um, because I think, I mean, just going by the, the sheet that Pam sent out, the fact that there's like. Two hundred openings for different committees and commissions, like I, I didn't even know that. And that's a, that's a lot of openings that possibly people could be interested in. So I, I think we have a lot, a lot to work with as far as, um, you know, the, the amount of, of. Openings and opportunities that are there for people.
Wen. I didn't notice I was muted, sorry.
Um, I totally love the idea of a citywide fair. Um, you know, it's really important that people know that such things exist. There's just so much, it's like, it's like, um, exactly like, um, Garrick said, the mystique behind it all, you know, so. Um, I really, really love that idea. Um, the other thing I was thinking was just within my own little ward or my community where I live. Um, it would be so great. Uh, and I wanted to talk to the group about this. Can we print out the, the public meeting and post it where, where, you know, in our area that we live? Um, that might be just a simple way um, to, you know. Pass out flyers or um, you know. Kind of like getting out there and pounding the pavement in a way, but you know, just wanting to bring attention to, to the mission and. Exposing people, what's up?
Thank you so much Wen. Um. You know, keeping sort of goals and expectations, um, I think, I think it's, it's. You know, the commission sometimes they hold public hearings during their, you know, there's. Useful life, right? It would be a couple of months, a year, whatever, right? And I think that, yeah, I mean, uh, what Garrick said, the idea, I think would be really good. Uh, we will have to sort of to coordinate it and to work with, you know. With um. Somebody in the municipal level to be able to make it happen across the board. And I think that if we, if we do it, we may wanna think about, you know. I would love to do in Hampshire Heights. I would love to do it in other places that is not downtown, right? Uh, or places where, you know. Most of the people are gonna be able to walk. That a public transportation is not actually an issue. Um, I think that that would be good. Um. Now talking about a little bit about expectations. Um, and, and I, I, I put this one specifically because I keep thinking in my head, of course, we're gonna come out with a report. But, and I love the sudden, I said, well, you know, I didn't ask anybody about that. So um, I would, uh, you know, me and Jamila will draft the report based in all these meetings, based in all the conversation. Everybody's gonna be able to sort of twing into it and add, you know. Um, but I would like to, to, to talk a little bit about, you know, in relation to expectation, if we do feel that a report. Should be sort of the tool to reflect the, all these meetings, all the conversations or the analysis that we're gonna be doing. Or if anybody thinks that there's other ways to, to reflect it at the end of the process. Garrick, I feel that you have something to say.
I, I don't know if you, my face is literally giving me away. Trying to figure out how to, how to approach this. So I, I think a report is gonna be great. I also want us to be very realistic, uh, in this committee in that. Um, you know, no matter how awesome all of you guys are and we are, we are not. This is not a problem we're gonna solve overnight or, you know, there, I think this is gonna be an issue that continues. And I think that. Uh, again, the pandemic has shown that we need to be flexible because bear, the barriers to access. Easily shift, you know, who knows, another pandemic, all, there's a lot of, a lot of things. So I, I would like us to really think towards the future and setting up. The next committee to, to look at this, you know, I, I think that this might be something that needs to be revisited every. Couple of years, so um. I, I, I do think that having a report is gonna be great because in, passing along this information, you know, everything we gather should be easily looked up by the next. Group that does it. Um, you know, so they're, they're not doing what we're doing where we're just kind of. You know, we are building this from the ground up. And so I want whatever structure we have to have some lasting legs to, for the city, so. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much Garrick.
So I'm just thinking, you know, in a sustainable way, how would it, how would we sustain it and how would we like? Keep it going over the long term in this spirit that it is originally as it is right now. Um, that's just a thought.
Yeah, Jenna.
Um. Javier, I think it's a, for me, it feels a little difficult to answer your question of is the report the right, you know, vehicle for uh, sharing our findings? Or might there be other opportunities without yet knowing what our findings are, right? So I think a, I, I think about the report as a bare minimum and maybe some more opportunities will emerge as we, you know. Learn what we learned through this process and, and realize what our um, what our advice is for the future of these efforts. That may tell us kind of how best we can transmit that information. Um, I think to Counselor Perry's point about um. You know, having, having a good record for the future, I think making sure that the report reflects. Um. Not just our, you know, the outcomes of our process, so what our advice is, but the detailed process, research. Conversations, data that we gathered and so forth, so that as people are trying to build on our efforts in the future. They don't need to reinvent the wheel, um, and wonder about kind of how and, and where we came to our conclusion. So that we can be really transparent about whatever, you know, resources we've drawn on, um, you know, beyond our own. Conversation and, and um, collective expertise in, in coming to our. Conclusion. So when I think about the, the format of the report, I think about, you know, sort of. What did we find out about the status quo? What did we find out about the barriers based on our conversation, based on data and research, based on testimony? What didn't we find out because we didn't have the time or the resources or the data to come up with it? And then, you know, what are our recommendations and all the different areas that we've already been talking about, right? The process, outreach, um, and information dissemination, messaging and so forth. Um, cause I think it's, you know, again, to Counselor Perry's point, this, all of this information is going to change and transform over time. The barriers um, will be different today and the enablers will be different. In the future as well, right? I mean, the program that I mentioned, that was really key for me and getting involved no longer exists. So three years ago, that might have been a really good group to tap into, to try to sort of promote these kinds of opportunities, but it doesn't exist anymore and, and. But more good opportunities will pop up in the future. So um, you know, whatever we create, making sure that it's um. Easy to build on and, and so that it can be a living document into the future, I think will be really important.
Yeah. I, I, I wanna sort of say, um, hold on, I'm gonna wait for Wen to go and after that I can, I can speak. Wen, come back from the woods.
What I'm thinking is accessibility is a huge barrier that I think so many don't think about. And when I'm thinking, stating this, I'm thinking of language, um, thinking of language barriers. Um, and language barriers can be in any number of ways, like it could be that we don't have anybody to sign. You know, we um, have, you know, only small amounts of population from a specific culture. Um, and there are no translators for those people. And so even having it on the city website would not help them. Um, if they don't read English. And so that's just a thought that I don't wanna forget about. Thanks.
Yeah, language accessibility, um, you know. And, and also, I mean, you know, we're talking about a level of cultural competency that um, you know. Entire city has to work on that. So I think that you said, it's, there is a starting point, right? But what I wanna, what I was gonna say before was. I would invite everybody. To. Think that we, this is, this is the committee that is gonna change what's happening, whatever, whatever that is, right? I would invite that. Because I don't want you to feel off the hook. I don't want you to feel that, you know, we're just gonna tell a couple of stuff and, you know, to. You know, I do agree that this is sort of the report, all these conversations, when we deliver the report, that's gonna be sort of a Polaroid of moment. And that moment is gonna change. I agree with that. But that doesn't mean that we don't have the power to create tools for accountability, to recommend tools for accountability. Uh, reporting mechanisms are powerful. In, in, when we're talking about uh, municipal structure, right? So reporting mechanisms for demographics serving in the city every six months. Reporting mechanisms of accessibility, reporting mechanisms of the amount of languages that are being spoken in city committees. I mean, you know, I'm just throwing things in the top of my head, but I would invite this group. To, because I will not let you off the hook. That's what I'm saying. I, I think that we should approach this as. We can change things. But the challenge and what I learned is that we need to be super specific. We have to give recommendations that are actionable, that can be measured. And that are accountable to reporting. Those are things that are tangible. So the next time that this issue is being talked about. There is data, right? Um, if something is not written down, if information is not collected. That information doesn't exist. So one, so the bare minimum that we can do is to create a system where that reporting mechanism is created, right? What kind of reporting mechanism? I don't have any idea because we are just starting. We're gonna find out. What do we think is important to keep track of, right? But I would invite this group to, you're not off the hook. And I know you don't, don't do a mental event, but I ju, I just wanna say. We can change things in, in really concrete stuff. Are we gonna fix everything? No, that's, that's not gonna happen. Can we be really influential in really specific ways? I do believe so. Cynthia.
Yeah, thank you for saying that Javier and Jenna. I think you outlined a really just chapter, chapter by chapter, great report, some of the things that you were talking about. And Gwen, you as well. And um, you, you zeroed in Javier and what I, what I wanna focus on too is. How will we measure success? Like if there's two hundred vacancies right now, I'm making this up. Then success is year one, there's a hundred, year two, there's fifty, you're, you know, how do we measure success? And that allows us to drive our recommendations. Um, but just the profile you're talking about, I'm not sure there is a profile in the city of who applies, right? Are they white? Are they a certain age? Are they, you know, who applies and who actually is, are in the boards right now? Doing an inventory of that. That would be fascinating to, to see. So data collection. I just, I hearken back, sorry that we keep referring to this police commission report, but um. You know, it ended up, I don't know Javier, being over a hundred pages and we had all the stuff. You know, the conversations, the process, what we did, blah, 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 blah. But it was really the recommendations that I think a, a hierarchy like city council and mayor. They're just like, they, they moved to that page really fast, right? Like recommendation number one, you know, and number two and number three. And so um, the report is important, the way this particular. Power structure works. That's how they work. They work off of reports, but um, but we have a lot of power too. I mean, I really, I really do believe that, so. Thanks for uh, challenging us, Javier. That to be, that to be lazy.
Excellent. Um, Garrick, do you wanna say something?
Yes, I did. Uh, and, and I, I too wanna thank you for making sure that, you know, you, you keep us on track and, but I did wanna say that my. My mentioning of, of preparing for the future was not to say that we're just gonna kick the can down, um, you know. You know, things like fights for equality, it's always a struggle, you know, it's, it's a series of battles and, you know, you. You win one, but you always you're planning for the next one. And I think that's what we are doing. Um, and I think that's very important is to, you know. You know, when I say we're not gonna solve the issue and it's not to say that we should just be disheartened and go home, because we are all here because we know that we can make a difference. But I, I, I liked Cynthia's discussion about what is success? How do we measure uh? If we've done our job and, you know, that might be something we can look into more, but. you know, whether it is filling positions or or even if not filling positions, seeing an increase in applications, you know, that is a measure of success, you know, looking at the data who was applying. You know, if if we find that through our efforts, we have an increase in minorities, underrepresented populations, you know, that's a success. So, you know, I I and I think as we start to form, you know, this committee more and really start to get down to the nuts and bolts, then we'll be able to have like kind of an idea of what success is going to be. So, thank you for saying that.
Excellent. I so so when you raise your hand and put it back. Is there anything there?
Well, Garrett just pretty much said it. I love the idea of having that as some form of measurable success is that that there are positions and that people, I guess I was thinking of like, I always think of like, how can I inspire people? You know, how can I make them excited about this, you know, in their own community? And I think, you know, sometimes where there's not, there's always like a few people always like doing the same thing over and over again for many years. I think people get the impression that either somebody else will take care of it or that they they don't recognize the opportunity, which we've talked about. And I I think in terms of like measurable success, I I think that another measure of success would be, you know, having people nicely matched to committees and boards where they can really do like some really, you know, wonderful things. So I know that's more of a long-term thing, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So, goals and expectation formulation, record requests to collect data. So just for clarification, we created this agenda before we got the awesome documents from from Pem. So I'm gonna propose that we table that. So everybody can take a look to the dog, a really well look to the document that we got from Pam. And we can sort of come at next meeting and talk about that. I think that we are gonna get a lot of ideas. And I think, I don't know, it's, I I want to see nodding or negative faces, nodding, uh, Gary, nodding, nodding. When I don't know if you're nodding, they are nodding. Excellent. So we're gonna tail with that. So the next item, I'm gonna pass it to Vice Chair, Jamila.
Okay, so the next item is strategy to collect testimonies. So, yes, this would be what what are you guys thinking about? How we're gonna go about collecting testimonies from people if we want to do that? If people think that's a good thing for us to kind of go after? How how would we go about that? What kind of testimonies do we want from who? Just kind of thinking about that. Javier?
I'm gonna let when go first.
Well, I kind of had a humorous thought, and I don't know if anybody has ever heard of the series of books called Postscript. And so there was a blogger and he was, this was back in the early 2000s, and he ran like a a relationship blog. And he started getting so many postcards and letters of like people's like secret fears, you know, there there are things. And so what he did was he decided to put a call out for people to send postcards to a mailbox that were anonymous. And he actually made three, three books. It was incredible and just put together in such an incredibly humane way. But I just wanted to share that 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 was my thought just now.
Cynthia?
Um, yeah, Jamila, just a question about these testimonies. Are they from applicants who were successful? Applicants who were not successful? People on the street?
You want to get it from applicants who were successful or applicants who were not successful? I mean, it seems like applicants who are not successful don't want to testify, but that might not be all of them. I don't know.
Depends on what we mean by testify. I mean, I I can, I can have a personal conversation, right? And not not have them come on a Zoom tile.
Right, right.
So so it's applicants. Is that what we're focused on here?
I would think so. I mean, I kind of wanted, yeah, applicants, yeah. I would think so.
They failed applicants. Because I I I only know a couple for a few.
Well, I feel like we could do successful applicants as well. I mean, why not?
Okay. Jana?
Uh, so I have just a level setting question, which is, I would appreciate it if somebody would clarify what you mean when you say testimony. That's not something I'm familiar with from either of the boards that I'm on, so I want to make sure I understand how that functionally works before thinking about who I would want to invite into that process.
Jamila, if you, when I can sort of talk a little bit about that. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
So what we mean by testimonies is can be in any format in any way, right? So one of the things that we had in mind is that to create a Google form where people can share, you know, that can be sort of general questions about from one to 10, the level of accessibility. How mu- how important it's, you know, language, language access. How many times have you applied? Could be from that to written testimony or people who feel more comfortable. And this obviously would be would would be done in a way to, you know, to 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 maintain confidentiality. Could be an audio recording that that, you know, we can sort of do some transcript to it. So any kind of testimony, I would say that may get us sort of a a real sense on the ground or how people that had been successful or unsuccessful tried to be part of board, right? So I'm I'm up to any kind of way. That's in testimony is not only narrative, it's also that be also we can do sort of an assessment.
Jana?
So just clarifying, it sounds like testimony is not subject to, uh, well, not that it's not subject to open meeting law necessarily, but it's not the same as public comment where somebody is coming forward and having to identify themselves by their name and address and so forth. That there are other ways to participate, particularly participate anonymously or kind of en masse and not necessarily showing up to a meeting. So it's, I'm just trying to make sure I understand it substantively different than public comment.
That that's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all very helpful. So I I agree that talking to people, that there's value in talking to people both who have been unsuccessful and successful in the process of applying for boards, but that also leaves out an entire population of folks who don't know that these opportunities exist or think that they're not for them and therefore never put in the application to begin with. Now, that's a much harder population for us to reach. So I don't know how we do that, but I think it's critical that we try to involve that population in our process in some way.
Counselor Perry?
Yes, I think that what Janet said is she took the words out of my mouth. I I wanted to make sure that, you know, our our goal is to look at barriers for people applying, implying. And so if people don't know, you know, that's that's a whole thing. But I also think we could look at some of the city staff and and hear what they think about what has worked over the years. You know, how how things have changed, you know, as Jenna said, there there used to be a committee that kind of helped springboard her into that, you know, I I think the folks who are in the city also have knowledge, which could be great. And and I think this testimonial portion, if I'm understanding this, is mostly data collection. We're just collecting data from people who have gone to board, you know, who applied, correct? So, yeah, so I I think that, you know, if we're gonna look at people who haven't done it, maybe again, looking inside of our system and and communicating with Sean Donovan, for instance, he does a lot of outreach with folks and maybe having just a survey that he can help pass around for people would be a good, you know, way to kind of reach some of the people who don't know. You know, whether it's a questionnaire, it's like, hey, have you ever thought of service? You know, why, you know, what, why have you not? Did you know their opportunities? Those questions, we can, you know, we can approach it in in three different ways. So, you know, we want to get the people who already know about it, who applied, succeeded or failed, you know, we can talk to the city who helped move the process along, and then we can talk to people who just don't know. And I think that each each subsection is going to require a different approach. So.
Javier?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, right. It's obvious that somebody who fail applying is because the person has the access and may have the timer ready to serve, right? Which is different for somebody who basically feels that, you know, commissions are not relevant and they're not gonna change anything. So why I would serve, right? Which also would speak to, are we having really those kind of commissions that are relevant for the people? Or just technical? To the instrumental to the functioning of the municipality, right? So I think that that's interesting and I think I agree with that. So I talked to Sean, I met with Sean two days ago, I think, yes, two days ago. So he is gonna come to one of our July meetings. I still need to confirm which one, but in July he's gonna be able, they they are still dealing with the with the budget and all the things that they have to do for the parental community care. So in July, he's gonna have a viability and I'm gonna call, we're gonna, with Jamila, we're gonna coordinate with Sean for a date for him to come. And I'm gonna try to give you a heads up with time so everybody can, if you want to prep questions. As I said, for the New Hampshire Police Commission, I worked with Sean Donovan creating a survey. He had his own survey. We sort of cluster all the testimonies that we got, I got, that he got. So this is a process that we have done before. The the difference is in, as Garrick said, and and when and Jenna said, it's sort of the target audience, right? And certainly one size is not gonna fit all. And when we're talking about accessibility of people who are systematically being rejected and put aside, those are two different demographics, right? And we want to hear from both. So that's something that we need, we were gonna sort of to have to talk about and sort of have a lot of clarity about it.
Gwen, did you have your hand up?
Yes. So I was thinking of like doing a blanket mailing or something like that, but I think as Javier is saying that it would be more of a targeted, a targeted thing. And so.
Okay, any more discussing on that? Counselor Perry?
I just have a question. You know, we talked about the police commission and maybe you guys could just inform me how you went about getting testimonials, how the outreach worked for for that.
Sure. So first, it was extremely difficult to convince, not to convince, but to really show the big group that was important for us to collect testimonies. Was was it was was not simple, was not an obvious mode for the big group, right? Mostly because, you know, it takes a while for we we were like 14. We're a lot. So it's complicated to generate sort of the cohesive group that it's, you know, you're gonna give that kind of idea and everybody's gonna be like, yes. Which is when I think that is ideal for a small sized group like ours, which, you know, not, you know, testimony. Yeah, of course. Okay. So we created a subcommittee to do it. And that subcommittee was open was Alex Jarrett, Dan Kennedy. And I was a chair and Sean cooperated and worked with me, right, on on different stuff. And one of the things that we did suddenly is that we cooperated in a targeted outreach, which means when we're talking about unhoused people, when we're talking about people that are in poverty, people that low income. So we knew, we knew that we needed to target those, but also we put sort of a general call. In in a lot of cases, we promote that on different interviews and radio shows. We tried to promote it within the city of New Hampton. We probably put posters, we so we did a lot of stuff, including coffee shops, we we put it, so places where we thought was gonna be important, right? We also targeted affordable housing complexes. So we we did a lot of different stuff to try to do it. In my end, we created Google Doc that would allow you to give a rewrite your testimony, decide if it's what anonymous, if it was not anonymous, or that the same Google form would allow you to upload an audio file. And you and and when when, if I remember well, you would do the option that audio file would transcribe or would be played. Sean did something similar. He got a lot of written testimony. At that point, Sean was still working with the Wildflower Alliance. So Sean would have sort of a little more time to be able to sit with somebody and write down what they were saying and gather their their testimony, right? One of the things, and I think I mentioned this in our organizational meeting, the big challenge is that it's really easy to come up with people with good experiences, right? It's really easy, super easy, right? Everybody here has been successful, being called to serve in a community, right? It's really easy for that, right? But at the same time, we we should not false, fall into a false equivalency. Not because it's working for us, it's working for everybody, right? So that that was sort of the challenge. And also in in adding one more layer to that challenge was that, and I mentioned this in our organizational meeting. New Hampton is a tiny town. So if you get testimonies for anything that is a negative experience, you sort of, it's really easy to reverse engineer that for anybody who perpetrated that or anybody who is familiar with that situation and know who said it. It's it's super easy, super easy. And that's that's something that I am, I maybe I invite this group to think about it, right? If somebody comes forward saying I have a bad, this is my bad experience and described the bad experience when I applied to this committee, that's gonna be really easy for anybody reading and having access to that document to know who that person is, right? And that's make things complicated because people get really fearful. And this is what I mean when about our privilege, right? I can be here laughing with you and talking about this. And because I don't, I don't, I don't care. I mean, I mean, I do care, but I I it's not in my mind thinking I should not say this or that, right? And but but that's privilege, right? So and also we need to be really thoughtful because in the, at the moment that we use that and we added in our system, in our email. If that's getting to our email, if that gets passed from one member to another, that becomes subject to open record, right? So we need to be really thoughtful about that. So the process that we should come with has to be thoughtful enough to know that it's not gonna be perfect, by no means. And it's gonna be super imperfect, but we need to get as close as we can to be able to assure people that there, if if needed, that their identity, it's gonna be, it's gonna be protected. And one of the ways that we have to be really thoughtful about is, is that we're not generating documents that are subject to 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 an open record request.
I I think too that, you know, the police commission was a very it was divisive and it was, you know, we're talking about taking money away from cops and cops treating people inappropriately, right? Cop with a gun coming to a to a situation. So so my only point in saying that is that we would get scores and scores of people at every meeting. And we were kind of committed to hearing them. out, every single one of them. I can't remember Javier if we ever cut off public comment, much to our, you know, we were there five, six hours a night, okay, just because we did two hours of public comment. So we, we, the the testimonies you're asking for, Jamila, we sort of, it was built into the cake of the very nature of of that of that commission. I don't think we're that controversial. I mean, there is some controversy. So it's gonna be a little more work at trying to get those testimonies and have people feel comfortable. And I think to Javier's point, it's not gonna be a perfect process. So.
I like the idea of of a Google Doc, but I wonder Javier, would that be open, would that be open to public disclosure, like a Google Doc?
That's a good question. Thanks, Cynthia. That's a good question. By, so to say the thing, so the way how we did it, every single warning was in the document placed in a way that by the time you got to do it, you knew what 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 was gonna happen with that that testimony, right? Uh, also, in this was, in my case, happened to me, but way less than with Sean because he would be doing one to a lot more than one to ones that I was doing uh, at that point, because he was, you know, he was, that was, you know, he was working with this this community. Sean would have conversations with them about this, right? So if Sean was taking the the the, and and also was easier for Sean because Sean was not subject to anything, right? So but if Sean told them that there was an optional of the Google form, he would have to give the entire spiel about, you know, this may happen, this may happen, we need to, we wanna be really upfront with you. And even when they did, when Sean gathered sort of written testimony and after that the person we, he left and we left with people a number, so I I left my number, so they would be able to call me back if, you know, if two days later, they have afterthoughts and they didn't want to add their testimony. So they would be able to call me and and the deal was that you call me saying, you know what, better know. I don't say anything. I just say, oh, that's really bad. Oh, my God. No, no, you said no. Okay, that's it. That's the money doesn't exist. And because this was not entered into the into the database, the Google Doc form that we have at that point was still in the pre stage was not part of a meeting. Also, because, you know, a person in the street is not subject to us, it's about the communication between us and the material that we're creating within ourselves for this work, right? It's not, it's right, it doesn't count until it comes to play into that. So, Gemma, I want to flag that we, it's A fourteen, we want to leave at least knowing this group ten minutes to talk about the next meeting, the schedule. So just want to flag that.
Yeah, so we can move on to the next bullet point, if you guys are done discussing our possible compensation. I know it's something we talked about before, and it's something that was in the document that Pam sent out, that there was compensation at one point for one group. But I I don't know, me and Javier, I'm not talking to Suzy, soliciting around it.
Yeah, I so we are sort of unaware of any full, complete written down opinion about this issue. It may be, but we haven't heard about. So one of the things that we are gonna try to do in the coming week, it's to getting in touch with the city, so you're trying to see if can issue a written opinion. A written opinion is really important. It's, there is quite a difference between a verbal opinion and a written opinion. So we're gonna be looking into that. If the, at the end of the day, if the, at the end of the day, the opinion is that there cannot be a period for people serving in commissions, I mean, when we're talking about childcare, when we're talking about you know, access to internet, that is gonna allow me to be part of this. If the case comes down that the city cannot put that money, I mean, I I, you know, I still advocate to look for alternative funding and to look for a way to do it.
Gwen.
Well, I I actually was thinking about alternative funding, and I was thinking that money can be a really huge motivator. But I think also, I I feel like if we're serving in our community or people are serving in their community, they should at least earn a way to put back into the community or enjoy the community. And I think you know, I was thinking like, you know, gift cards or, you know, experiences that are local incentivizing people in that way. I, you know, really like the idea of a circular economy when it comes to government service.
Cynthia.
Um, yeah, I am recently, I'm in this organization about redesigning power structures. It's from a DPH grant, and we talk about this a lot. And the host organization came up with a compensation policy that I'm happy to share, but the the kind of cool thing is, and I'll just give you the number, it's it's thirty dollars a meeting. But if you're a person who, you know, we all have our individual situations, but you have a full time job and you, you know, you don't need or want that thirty dollars, you know, that that's available in in a, in a very confidential way for individuals who feel they need that thirty dollars. And so if that's the number, okay? And so it's just a, it's a way of thinking about it that it's a, it's a great advertising tool, you know, if you need compensation for these meetings, it gives you, it's kind of clean per meeting, thirty dollars. And so and and what happened with this particular organization is that most people opt out, right? Because they know, they know the intention and who we're trying to entice to come to these these type of committees with this particular policy. So I'm kind of with folks that say, you know, I do think the city's first reaction is like, no, no, we don't, we don't do that. And I really think we've got to push because it could be done. I think it, I think it can be done if we really want to do that, or at least at the very least in our report, we say, hey, this is what we're recommending. This is, this is really important. It could make a difference.
Yeah, I think we should definitely include it in our report as a recommendation. And when your idea of of a like a gift card or maybe like a Northampton gift card would be great. Jana.
I kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. I mean, I'm not entirely sure that we've actually identified that money itself is the barrier. I mean, I think childcare is a barrier, time is a barrier. Money might solve some of that, but not all of that. So I think it's very useful to gather the information about what isn't, isn't allowable. But I'm at least not yet ready to say, I definitely want to recommend this thing when I have really no information to suggest one way or the other, whether that would be a motivator or an enabler for people. It probably would be intuitively, I think it would be, but I don't yet feel like I have sort of evidence to back that up. So I think as we're thinking about it, I don't, I don't want to ask for the data just to figure out how we can immediately figure out some other way to do it. I want to ask for it so we know what the structures are and then also hopefully take the time to figure out whether that would legitimately change things before we decide what we're, what we're recommending.
Javier.
Yeah, I, yeah, this is a little bit to sort of to moving ahead too fast, right? But I'm always gonna come with a but. So specifically, in the Hunter River Commission, lost three women of color. And I think that from, at least from where I'm coming, I can speak by myself. One of the big issues was the accessibility and being able to to access childcare and pay for childcare. So that's, that's from where so I'm coming from experience, I'm not coming from just, you know, I think this may be, that certainly was something extremely bad. Because I mean, what what turned out for us was that we lost extremely important voices of women of color systematically was like all of the sudden in considered weeks, they were gone because, because of, you know, different issues that are related to that. So so we're coming from that. And the reality is that we put it in this here with Jamila because we do think that so we are not gonna have extremely concrete conversations until we have the concrete information, right? And in the meantime, I personally want us to start sort of talking about things, starting sort of teasing issues. Independently, if after that, that is gonna take us in that direction. If what we're talking now, it's gonna complement what we've seen that up, excellent. If it's not, we have a thoughtful conversation that is gonna help us to go wherever we need to go.
Cynthia.
Yeah, in in the interest of time and Javier, I just want to, I contacted all those women, all the women of color that left our commission. And I do have to just say that the number, one of the number one reasons were that they didn't feel heard. And so that's something that I do think we have to keep in mind. If people don't feel like they're really a part of this, they're not going to, they're not going to apply. So and and that's about culture, right, in in a committee. And it's about the culture that's established already in in some of these committees. So people need to feel heard. And so and I heard it from, from the three, four women that left.
Gwen.
Well, there were a couple of things I couldn't agree more with, and I know that I run into it in my own community is just you know, the times of the day. You know, a lot of people say, how come you don't do it while the kids are at school, you know, and, you know, that is a perspective that even as a mother, but as a parent of older children and not yet a grandparent, I haven't really thought about, you know, and so I keep sort of fooling around with that in terms of like the time, I'll change the time and in the day and then, you know, give it a few months. And then if those people still aren't coming, you know, I'll go out and reach out again and be like, okay, you know, I'm trying, you guys, what's going on? And, you know, a lot of what I hear is just like the timing and just stress, just general stress, like stress in the community, stress politically, fear. Fear of being unheard, fear of having the ideas rejected. You know, also kind of a sense of apathy in terms of like having been trying for so long to have that voice and just keep you know, having it not heard or changes not being made. And so I think people get, at least from what I, I talked to a lot of people about this stuff. And so that's what I hear a lot.
Well, we have number six on the agenda.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that with table number six. One of part of the word document that Pam Chair talks about sort of what what's the reading process for it? So I think we can sort of cluster number six with the second point of number five, which is from a record request and collect data. I think that may go hand to hand and we can table that. I don't know if the rest agree with it. Also, if we don't do it, we're gonna be here until nine.
Just saying. Yes.
Okay, so we table number six. Scheduling. So I'm gonna give you an option. So if I remember well, people are gonna be away. I'm gonna invite you to send me just one line, if you feel comfortable, send me one liner, I'm out this week, I'm out this week. I will sort of put together a doodle poll. After you do that, I'm gonna put together a doodle poll with all the really available dates. Right? Because I think it's gonna be the faster way to do it. Is that, it's that okay with everybody? When says yes, Dennis says this, okay, Garrick, yes, Jamila, okay, excellent. So in your end, you're gonna send me your sort of, when you're gonna be away, your sort of general availability for the next two weeks. And as soon as I get that, I will build a doodle poll based on that, and we're gonna be able to come out with our date. Excellent. I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Counsel Perry, a second. Jamila's second. Pamela.
Pam, can't hear you.
Gwen, a but?
Yes.
Counsel Perry?
Yes.
Cynthia Suarez?
Yes.
Jana White?
Yes.
Javier Luengo Corado?
Yes.
And Counsel Gore?
Yes.
Excellent. So these meetings concluded. Thank you so.